Please have a seat. Counselors, take your seats. Let's get this meeting started. Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, December 16th City Council Meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
................................................
Roll call of the members. Counselor Agenzio?
Here.
Here, Counselor Gino?
Here.
Here, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas?
Here.
Here, Counselor Herramio?
Here.
Here, Counselor Kelly?
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky?
Here.
Here, Counselor Silvestri?
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council President Cogliandro?
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Rule 34, Public Comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
At this time, this is the public comment section. If anybody has public comments in regards to something that is on the agenda, now is the time to speak about it. You will not have an opportunity to do so when we get to that item. So if you want to speak on anything, except the public hearings, obviously, you'll have an opportunity to speak during the public hearings. But now is the time to step up and speak. I know there were other people in line at the subcommittee. It now would be a time for you to speak on that as well, okay? Please state your name, your address for the record, and please let us know which item you are going to speak on.
Just a quick clarifying comment. So in the original council agenda that was proposed, the Housing Production Plan was noted as a public hearing?
It is not.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure folks know this is the time to talk about the Housing Production Plan.
Correct. Thank you. And let's begin. We have 30 minutes.
Good evening, Council. First of all, I would like to take a moment of silence for what happened in Madison, Wisconsin today. I don't know if you're all aware of this, but there was a Christian academy where there was a shooting. A teacher and a student have died, and there are six others that are injured and in critical condition.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Christine Robertson, 187 Charder Street, Revere, Mass.
And what will you be speaking on tonight?
I will be speaking on this Housing Protection Act?
Housing Production Plan?
Housing Production Plan.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I am Christine Robertson. I'm at 187 Charder Street. First of all, I want to thank all of you who have talked to me over the weekend. I know that you are inundated with phone calls, and I appreciate your time and effort. I truly, truly do. I also want to thank Tom for his clarification. So some of what I may say may be a moot point at this point, but I will read what I wrote, if that's okay? Okay. So I have read through some of the 151 pages Housing Protection Act document. It is quite convoluted and appears to be hell-bent on turning the city into a concrete jungle. I am sure that you must realize that many neighborhoods are being inundated with new housing, and most of them are multifamily buildings. Just take a ride through our neighborhoods and city streets. Pretty soon, we will be shaking hands with our neighbors through our windows. We will be that close. Where does this end? Why are we going to burden this city with more people, more congestion, more cars, more children in our already overcrowded, overburdened streets and school system? We are a gateway city, and we who live here pay the price for it every single day. I understand the act that was signed by Governor Haley, but does that mean Revere must take on the motherload of responsibility to fix this issue? What are Newton, Wellesley, Concord, Lexington, Weston, Newburyport, Rockport, and all those other elite communities doing about this? They too are along the MBTA transit lines. Let them take their fair share. As a matter of fact, the Blue Line is the shortest line of all the MBTA transit lines. Going forward, it would behoove this city to require every developer to include a percentage of their projects to affordable housing with no ability to appeal the project once approved. No setbacks, minimal lot size or street parking, first right of refusal by the city? Seriously? Remember one thing. You will be handing the keys to the chicken coop to the proverbial fox if you pass this through. On the backs of the hard-working, longtime tax-paying citizens of Revere, these foxes will continue to defecate all over Revere and eat their lobster somewhere else. It will be an absolute anarchy. Thank you for listening, and happy holidays to you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Name and address for the record. Push the button, ma'am.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm a resident of Revere.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Pamela. My address is 211 Lantern Road in Revere. I've been a resident for a long time.
What are you here to speak on tonight, ma'am?
Housing.
Yes, ma'am. Proceed.
Okay. I really want housing. Affordable. Okay? For me, I'm trying to stay here. I'm a volunteer with neighbor developers, and I love Revere. But it's getting too expensive. You know, a lot of people are moving out because it's too expensive, you know? And my understanding is you want residents to stay here. In order for them to stay here, it's got to be affordable. You know? It's getting to a point where I might have to move out of here. You know? And I don't want to go live with my family. I'm trying not to. And as far as housing and Coolidge, it's a long waiting list. I'm there, but they haven't called me yet. You know? I'm trying to stay. Please help or do something. Because I elect you for... I elect you guys for a reason. You know? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Lor Homes, 243 Campbell Avenue. Longtime Revere resident and member of the Revere Housing Coalition, as well as an organizer. You all know me. I've been involved with housing for many, many years. And there's a few things I just hope I can clear up. I've also been a participant on the working group for this Housing Production Plan. And a lot of work went in to making this plan by a lot of very good-hearted, well-meaning volunteers, most of us, working with the very, very able-bodied and intelligent staff that we have. We've had good people in our planning department before, but Tom Skarsky is really a great leader there, as well as his staff. And, you know, a lot of work went into this, and the city invested money into the consultants who were hired to do this. I think one thing maybe that we can get cleared up in the public hearing is that this plan should not be interpreted as "take it or leave it." This is a lot of research. I won't... I don't talk anymore about the need. I think there's wide consensus about the need for more housing of all different types in the city of Revere, across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, across the country. We don't need to debate that. What I do hope is that understandable that people don't want to move quickly, that you all don't want to approve the plan and accept it as a roadmap, especially since the controversy has risen up, and we just need to get the temperature down on that. I agree. But what I would love to hear out of this process is a commitment that we're going to move forward with figuring out housing. There's a lot of great research in this plan. There's a lot of strategies in this plan. They won't all work for Revere. They won't all work for Revere right now. But we've got to do something. We've got to do something. And cities and towns, they are doing it. The Arlingtons and the... You know, everybody's got to comply with this and do their part. And I look forward to seeing Revere make progress on this, and I look forward to working with all of you to get there.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record.
I'm going to be the tough one tonight. Ed Terrill, 70 Soul Street, Revere, Mass. Everybody knows me, for better or worse. Sorry, it's a little hard today. It's been a lot of history with me in the city. People have called me names. They've attacked me. They've threatened me. They tried to cancel me. It's been very, very difficult. Recently, I suggested that there should be an overhaul with the school committee. And it was suggested to me that if I said anything, my family members would be retaliated against. Now, I'm going to get back to the original point.
What are we here to speak on tonight, sir?
The Housing Production Plan.
Thank you. Let's please stick to that, sir.
So I'm going to ask the most difficult question of all, and no one's going to like it. I noticed in the plan, the previous Director of Economic Development was mentioned. Is it true, Mr. President, that he was under FBI investigation?
We're not answering questions during public comments, sir. And I'm not going to answer something like that.
The reason I bring that up is because, time and time again, we're told to only talk about the good things that happen in the city, and it's very, very true. There are a lot of good things. But there's a lot of problems. And every time someone brings up a problem, they're threatened, bullied, or harassed. And it needs to stop. In terms of housing, it's all part of the same thing. You know? We just had a school shooting. We must turn down the temperature. We must stop harassing each other. We must stop bullying each other. And we need to start talking about the truth, no matter how painful it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Name and address for the record. No, ma'am, come on up. Ma'am, come on up. You are next.
Hi. My name is...
You can pull it. There you go.
Good. Okay. Hi, my name is Gail Jafreda Kingsley, and I've been a lifelong resident of Revere. And when I got this notice about what was going on, I said, "What do we have to move?" I would be heartsick to leave Revere. What I did not like about the development and what they want to do is go from line to line. So that means, what are they going to do? Knock down the house next door to me and build a building that I have to look in somebody else's window? I think that's unfair, especially we are in suburban. And most people who went from East Boston or other areas from the city came to Revere for suburban life. And I feel you should keep it that way. I don't care. A lot of houses... I live in what was called Colonial Acres, built by the Fester family. And I want to keep it that way. I notice a lot of homes are going up. They're tearing them down, but they're building up. They look beautiful. Keep that. It's up to the people who are owning these houses to go for affordable rent. Not the... Yes, we do need affordable housing. I do agree with that. But it's up to the individual owners. They're going by the greed of everybody else in Boston, charging unbelievable rents to people. I think there maybe ought to be some rent control in Revere for the housing. And that's all I have to say. I hope that you, all you council people are beautiful. You do a great job. I voted for all of you in the certain areas, because I know you represent certain areas. And Kelly, yes. Gino, yes. We've been a lifelong neighbors, our whole life. And I want to see it stay that way. Ho. And there's one more problem, which I don't know. These people, these developers who are coming into the suburban areas, they're using these houses as boarding houses, which means every single night, there's different people walking up and down our streets. We're not used to these people. And you don't know if they're killers, murderers, they're terrorists. I am really upset. It's happening right... I live on Nell Road. It's happening right on Nell Road. There's seven cars every single night parked. If I have family members want to come over, they can't come over. How does that stop? And you know what? You want to... They want to run a business like that? Raise their taxes, not the individual people that we're struggling to get by. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anthony Cantino, and I live at 240 Suffolk Avenue.
And what will you be speaking on today?
Okay. I believe that most people in Revere...
Sir, what are you going to be speaking on tonight? Which agenda item?
Oh, it's on.
Which agenda item?
Well, we're talking about housing.
Thank you for clarifying. Continue.
Thank you. You know, I don't say, "Hail Marys, and our fathers here." You understand? We're talking about housing, okay? And people don't understand. In America, it's a capitalist country, and you're going to grab as much as you can. And even those people that are complaining about affordable housing, once they get a housing, they're going to grab as much as they can, just like anybody else, okay? So as far as affordable housing goes, go and get a housing that you can afford. That's it. You understand? Because the police department put me out of business.
Your time is up. Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next person in line? Your time is up. I hate to say, that's not the first time I've been called that. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Taylor Jewfree Catalano. I live at 90 Lancaster Ave. I'm speaking as a private citizen today. You know, I'm just encouraging you to give the Housing Production Plan another look. I understand it's been tabled, but I would just really appreciate the consideration personally. My mother, she bought her first house at 26. And I'm 24 now. She keeps asking me, "When are you going to buy a house? When are you going to buy a house?" I am wondering when I'm going to be able to rent. I grew up in Revere. I went through the public school system, got a college education, came back. I'm working here. And, you know, review of this plan, some of the opportunities there would give me the opportunity to stay here and continue to work here and be a part of the community. And I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Annabella Sandy Roach. I live at 198 Prospect Ave. I just... I'm here to talk about the Housing Production Plan, as everybody else has been. I just want to... I know that this issue has been tabled, but I want to reiterate to the council that just because you can clearly hear the opposition doesn't mean that there's no support. There are many young people in Revere who, you know, maybe don't have the time or don't really know about all these issues that happen within the city council. And they can't, like, speak on these issues as they would like to. As a young person who is currently in college and would like to really come back and live here, this, like, affordable housing and creating more housing in general is an issue that's really important to me, and I would support this Housing Production Plan a lot. I also want to say that residents of Revere have already contributed to this plan. Like, they've already put in some of their input, especially residents in certain areas where these... where this plan would go into effect. And it's... I think that this resident input has, like, already made its point that the people of Revere want this to happen. And as this continues, residents will continue to get more involved, and you'll hear more of their support on this. I personally don't want to see more stalling on an issue that I think is really important when it's already been established that this is just a draft of a plan. It's not a finalized thing. It's not, you know... It's not saying we're going to tear up single-family homes and replace them with giant apartment buildings. It's just a draft, and as the council continues to review it with more time, it will find, like, form into its final form of the best possible plan for Revere. But that needs to continue with this plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for clarification, when the council tables a matter, that just means we need to talk about it more. We need to think about it, and we're going to be talking about it again. That doesn't get rid of it in any way, shape, or form, so please don't think that we are getting rid of the Housing Production Plan we're going to be talking about at the next committee or the whole subcommittee. Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Pozziale, 51 Arcadia Street. I'd like to talk about the drones over New Jersey. I'm just... Housing Production Plan. I... I would like to thank... My number was not on the flyer, but I got so many phone calls over the weekend about this, so I'd like to thank everybody for calling me. I'm not going to speak either way on this. I would actually like to see if the council, while you guys are dissecting this and talking about this, is it possible that we could get a projection on the revenue that this might bring to the city? If you moved forward on certain parts, how much revenue? Because the city does need revenue. I'm not saying I'm in favor of everything in this. There are some good things that come along with it. I wanted to see what it would do for the city over the next 10 or 15 years that might help us pay for the high school. The other thing is, could we get a number of how many affordable housing units are projected to come with this project as well? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And seeing... Are there anyone else that would like to speak? Yep. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Travis Alpert. I'm a member of East Coast of the National Church on 19 Coolidge Street, and I'm here to talk about the housing. I believe I have unique insight to a lot of different areas about this because since moving into the Coolidge Street area, it's just been... Outreach has been very important. So I've met with a lot of families that live in the Coolidge Street projects, where we have limited affordable housing. The reason I'm bringing that up is a lot of things are neglected in that area, right? Because it's tied up between federal, between state, and the city has their hands tied on it. The reason I bring that up is, so we have kids that come all the time, playing all over, you know, all over the property. And we don't want them to get hurt, right? And other people ask them, "Why don't you go to a playground?" They don't have one. Hundreds of kids, no playground, right? But it's tied up because of state and federal. The reason I bring this up is because if this gets rejected, like, it's something that we cannot stop. Affordable housing is an issue. It's going to be an issue. It's something we cannot stop. And if we can't do something intentional about it, the state will. And then we won't have control. We won't be able to keep our own people. We won't be able to take care of our own people. Sorry, I'm shaking, but it's just... It's a real need, you know? I have friends who host Misfit Holidays, who bring people from all over who don't have family members or don't have healthy places to be, right? And they finally moved into a bigger home. The only way they could afford it is to rent out the bottom, right? And so in order to keep good people with the rates that houses are now, we need, like, some accommodations. And those are written into this plan. I'm not saying it's perfect. I'm glad that it's tabled. And I am glad it's tabled because I want people to be able to understand it more. Because what it should be seen, it's not a threat. It's a moment to be intentional and to be in control of what happens and how it happens and for us to have a say. Because it's an issue in the state. It's an issue in the nation, and we can't stop it. But we can be intentional if we look this through and read it and understand it more and seeing... See it as something that we can all own as a community of Revere, where we can take care of one another and allow good people to stay and also allow it to be a city thing as opposed to a federal and a state thing, which it might become if we are intentional. Thank you.
All right. And that concludes the public comment section.
Calendar item number two. Hearing called is ordered on the reallocation of unexpended bond proceeds in the amount of $2,347,983.
This is a public hearing. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Name and address, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Counselor. Richard Viskey, City CFO, 281 Broadway. I'm here to speak in favor of this transfer of funds. The ability to move these unexpended bond proceeds to a new account to use for some of the recent capital items on the capital plan will help us tremendously and avoid us from issuing more costly debt since we have that cash sitting in accounts right now. So I am in favor of this transfer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? People in favor? Seeing and hearing none. We'll close that side. Any opponents? People not in favor? Seeing and hearing none. We'll close that side. Any city councilors? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Shall the City Council approve the reallocation of unexpended bond proceeds in the amount of $2,347,983? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Herramio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro?[1491.87]
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the the order has been approved. Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on a request of the Chief of Planning and Community Development relative to the adoption of a housing development incentive zone and proposed activities at Suffolk Downs, the adoption of a housing development incentive zone and proposed activities at Green Street, Shirley Avenue, and the authorization of Mayor Patrick M. Keefe Jr. to execute and implement housing development tax exemption agreements for housing development incentive projects in each respective zone.
This is a public hearing. We will open the floor to proponents. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Tom Skarowski, 281 Broadway. So the Housing Development Incentive Program, commonly known as HDIP, is a state tool that is available only for gateway cities, and it is a two-pronged tool. The first is what's called a local tax increment exemption, and this is on the value created for any newly developed housing project within one of the districts we're talking about here. So to give you an idea of what you mean by the increment, let's say that a parcel of land is valued at $100, and a housing developer puts in $900 worth of work into that property. That property is now valued at $1,000. The increment is that $900 of value that was created with that housing development. The first prong of this two-pronged tool is a local option to give a 10 to 100% exemption on that new value created, that $900, from a period of five years to 20 years. Under this plan, any housing development within one of the three districts that is created would be eligible for coming to the council to have the council authorize such an agreement. That local tax agreement is the first component of an HDIP plan. It is by far the least important of the two, but it is something you need to approve in order to be eligible for the second component, which is much more significant, and that's a state tax credit of up to $2 million or 25% of the value of the the housing development that's created. So in order to be eligible for that state tax credit, the localities need to authorize a local tax agreement, which again, it could be a five-year agreement, 10% of the increment created, which is, for all intents and purposes, a marginal amount for what the development could actually bring in in tax revenue. So the the plan basically looks at three districts, one of them being Suffolk Downs, and then the other being technically one district, but it's Green Street in the Shirley Avenue District, all the 40R smart growth housing that was adopted by the council about a year ago today. And so they have two different goals within them. So with the Suffolk Downs, the goal is to continue to accelerate development on what is the greatest economic development driver in the city. That's the goal for the Suffolk Downs District. The goal for the Shirley Avenue and the Green Street District is to actually utilize this tool to help spur the use of the 40R, not only to produce more mixed-income housing, but also to encourage more usage of our zoning ordinance as opposed to using a variance or or you using other measures to kind of work around the zoning ordinance. And the great thing about this participation in the 40R program is each and every project that is built using 40R money, we get $3,000 per unit of housing developed. And then in addition to that, there's a larger payment called a zoning incentive payment that the state will be paying back to to the city. So with each and every development project that might be eligible for a local tax increment exemption, we would present it to the council and we would discuss that at a later date. But for both Green Street and Shirley Avenue, the only way a project's eligible is if it uses the 40R. If a 40R project is permitted and built, it's gonna bring money back into the city. So although we would have to to be eligible for the state tax credit, we would need to exempt a small portion of taxes, we would actually get money back that I think could help offset the fiscal impact there. But again, the broader comment to make about all of this, I'm happy to answer any questions about the specifics of the plan, but each and every tax deal would go in front of you all to vote on at a later date. This is just to authorize the submission of the plan to the state and to authorize the mayor to be able to execute agreements if and when the council would approve it at a later date. And at that, I'm happy to, well, I guess it's a public comment, but.
Correct. Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? People in favor?
Could I just ask a question?
Are you a proponent or opponent?
No, because I just I I'm reaching out for a question.
It's this is gonna go into subcommittee as well. I'm sure if you went over there right now, he'd be happy to answer it for you. Any other people in favor? Seeing and hearing none. I'll move the I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? People not in favor? Seeing and hearing none, and we'll close that side of the hearing. Any city councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Skarowski. When the mayor enters into negotiations with Suffolk Downs, would he be able to negotiate more affordable housing at any of those buildings?
Theoretically, that could happen. I I think what we're trying to do is look at the potential on a project-by-project basis of of what this might bring. So I think with Shirley Avenue and Green Street, there's greater potential to leverage more affordable development. I'm sure if you spoke to the folks at HYM, they would say if we were to provide a massive tax break, then perhaps that's something they would consider. But with that project versus some of the other ones, that's already been permitted, and I think, you know, there might be an argument that we're moving the goalposts a little bit there, but theoretically, that is something that could be leveraged here.
Is there a piece of the Suffolk Downs development that that is affordable? Is there was there a small percentage?
10% of the Boston side is designated as affordable, but the Revere side is not.
It's not? Okay. But theoretically, the mayor could negotiate or try to squeeze some affordable housing out of those buildings?
That could happen, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Tom, my question was almost along the lines as Counselor Argenzio. If we agree to this, can we make a stipulation that a portion of it has to be affordable? Because I think I think I understand there's a given and take here, but I I think the only way we're gonna drive affordability is is either making little deals like this or just flat-out saying whatever you build has to be a percentage of affordable. So with a deal like this, could we put in there, if you build affordable, or that will disqualify this 40R?
So it wouldn't disqualify it just on its merits. I I think it would just that would have to be a back-and-forth between the developer and the city council. Ultimately, you are the ones that would authorize a tax agreement, and that would be your call. I would say I think the tax revenue that we're taking in through this project will give us a lot of flexibility to do the things that we want to do in both other districts and other elements of the plan. And I think those are all things to keep in mind. With a project of that scale, I think you might need a pretty significant tax break to help compensate, because although it's a $2 million tax credit, you know, it is not insignificant sum of money, it's not enough to drive significant housing development. So I think a $2 million tax credit plus a small tax deal locally, I wouldn't think from a market perspective would be enough to incent a lot of production of affordable housing. I think you all would need to get really aggressive about a tax deal, and then we have to think about the the sort of drawbacks to that approach.
Negative impact, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Got it. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is obviously going to the zoning committee. I don't want to I don't want to be a lawyer here, but you know, Suffolk Downs has a PUD. It was voted on a long time ago. Some of us actually lobbied against affordable for the Revere side because most of the affordable is going east Boston side, and big 10,000 or 7,500 units or whatever. So I don't I don't want to play lawyer, but I don't think it can be done legally. But and you were exactly right to say that would be moving the goalpost. That's, you know, originally, when we negotiated that project, my biggest my biggest disappointment is that we're not gonna get to use the revenue there to lower the tax rate like I promised my citizens because we're using it all for the high school, which I was against. Anyways, that's one way to get the little jab in there, but anyways, I don't I guess I disagree with the premise that we could ask for affordable at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Garino Swaya.
We may not be able to do it like for what happened in the past, but maybe moving forward, we can request for the affordable housing to be increased. And I think I think we should all consider this moving forward. But as far as going back to HYM after the fact and asking for affordable housing, I don't think it's gonna work.
Thank you, counselor. Permission to speak from the chair. So this concerns me. We are trying to hold on to every bit of revenue the city's making to build this high school, and now we're talking about our biggest revenue source giving them breaks so that they can build more. That is concerning to me with that project as a whole, because if that project fails or we start giving them breaks, how are we gonna pay for this? And that this is very concerning to me, and I understand the way this works, but we should be we should be taking every bit of tax revenue we can get. And it since the the reimbursement from the state is capped, it makes me nervous as well. If if we were giving here to get from here, that's fine. So I guess hopefully, and when we put this into is it zoning, I would imagine? When it goes into subcommittee, I would hope we can have a further discussion about that, Tom, because right now I can't support this the way it is without knowing the answer to that, so.
Understood.
Counselor Yaramio.
So I know this is a this is a money thing. Would this not go into Ways and Means or?
That's I was actually wondering if zoning is the correct subcommittee or if it's Ways and Means.
Already talked of.
I noted that in my letter when we referred to an HD zone. It created a lot of confusion in the community because we have an HD zone in our zoning, but this is has it's not a zoning question, I will say.
So then so then agreeable to put it into Ways and Means? What's the I have no I don't care where it goes. We gotta talk about it more, so. Somebody make a suggestion on.
Motion to move it to.
All right, so then let's put it into zoning then. If Counselor Zambudo wants it in zoning.
Unfinished business. Calendar item number four, an ordinance amending metered rates of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere.
Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
On an ordinance amending metered rates of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere, shall the City Council move for engrossment and ordainment? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hara Mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
No.
No, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky is recused. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Council President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Mr. President, I would like to ask for suspension of the rules so we could take up immediate consideration in the hopes it does not prevail.
Motion to suspend the rules. Counselor Zambudo is recorded as no. Rules are now suspended. Motion on the.
Motion for immediate reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered. Back to the normal order of business.
Thank you.
Committee of the whole report.
Do I have to? So we discussed the housing production plan. We had a lengthy discussion, both during the subcommittee and public comments. It has been tabled for further discussion at the next committee of the whole report. And the, excuse me, the housing development incentive is going to zoning. Thank you.
Communications. Calendar item number six, communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation from the Cable Access Receipt Reserved Fund to pay for Revere TV's quarterly invoice.
Regular business, right?
Good evening, Counselor. Rich Viskey, 281 Broadway, CFO, yes, quarterly appropriation from the cable TV money to the appropriate fund. Happy to answer any questions.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Shall the City Council approve an appropriation from the Cable Access Receipt Reserved Fund in the amount of $96,337.95 for the purpose of paying Revere TV's quarterly invoice? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hara Mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number seven, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Dora Hallet to the Conservation Commission.
Appointments.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Hal Abrams to the planning board.
Appointments.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Megan Simons-Herling to the planning board.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Dean Harris to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. Motions. Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request Mastott to repair the streetlights on the stretch of Winthrop Parkway, Route 145, at Short Beach in the interest of public safety. The poles were damaged due to motor vehicle accidents, and the state has yet to make the repairs.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add Counselor Silvestri to this motion. We have four lights on Winthrop Parkway around a bend that's very dark, coming in from Winthrop, coming from Winthrop to going to Revere Beach. Two poles were taken down. They weren't replaced. It's been three months now, four months, and then the other two adjacent from that is they're out too. So I just I don't know what's going on with, I think it's Mastott. They're not this the the boxes are open where there's wire. I'm afraid some kid might go and touch it. I don't know if they're alive or not, but it's a safety issue. So thank you very much. I'd like I'd like it to be addressed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Garino Swaya that the mayor requests the DPW to install trash barrels at the following locations, corner of American Legion Highway and Revere Street, corner of Hutchinson Street and Revere Street at 250 Revere Street, and replace the dilapidated barrel at the Paul Revere School.
Counselor Garino Swaya.
There's currently several barrels placed around Revere, but along Revere Street, there's a noticeable lack with only one located at the Paul Revere School, which is completely dilapidated. It needs to be replaced immediately. To improve waste management in the area, I would like to request the installation of the two barrels, one in front of St. Anthony's Church at the bend, and then the other one at the corner of Revere Street and American Legion Highway. These additions would help ensure cleaner streets and more accessible waste disposal options along Revere Street. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
For the record, Counselor Zambudo was recused from counsel order number 24-366. Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Argenzio that the city council awards certificates of accommodation to the Revere Youth Cheerleading U-12 Team and their coaching staff in recognition of their second-place finish at the Nationals in Florida.
Counselor Argenzio.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The cheerleading squad did a great job, traveled to Nationals, practiced hard. They got a great second-place finish, so I'd like to acknowledge them for all their efforts.
Thank you, counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. May I just have a point of personal privilege from the chair? This is my last meeting as council president, and I just wanted to thank all of you for your trust in me this year. I have very much enjoyed this seat. It was a lot of work, but I look forward to returning to my my normal seat in between Counselor Argenzio and Janino. I'll be in an experience sandwich is what I'm calling it, so. But from the bottom of my heart, thank you all for your trust in me this year. This meeting is adjourned.
Mr. President, Mr. President, Mr. President.
Counselor.
If I may, before you do the final adjournment, I just do a public service announcement. I know we all got the holidays coming up, Christmas coming up in a couple weeks and on the same day as Hanukkah, Jewish holidays, and I just want to take this opportunity to wish everybody a general holiday greeting and wish everybody good luck and a half happy and safe holiday. Thank you.
And I would like, Mr. President, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege as well. I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Buon Natale a tutti. Thank you.
Mr. President, I know that we we've had a fun year with you at the helm, and I want to say thank you for your guidance over the last year. As a rookie on the council, really appreciated your leadership, and Vice President Novoselfsky as well. Thank you both for your continued leadership and and guidance of me as as I I go on this endeavor as a newer city counselor and to the rest of you as well. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's that's one of the longest-serving city councilors here. I just want to congratulate you on doing a wonderful job as president. It was it was a pleasure to serve with you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. President, let's all get out of here.
This meeting is adjourned.